Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and ready to go.
All right. So, good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the City Council of Temecula, May 6, 2020. Madam City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Nagar.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwank.
I'm here.
And Mayor Stewart.
Here. All right. Well, thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. We have one business item today. That is to consider the update and the Fourth of July event and provide direction. So can I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'll cover that. The staff is seeking additional direction on two items that are particularly interested in TCSD operations. And as such, we believe of interest to many of the residents probably tuning in. The first being an update on our park parking lots since last week's meeting, which we hope results in the reopening of the balance of our park parking lots. And the second, one of the city's signature special events and recommendations for the Fourth of July celebration. Next slide, please. Now briefly, as you know, the city in abundance of caution closed facilities in certain high contact and high-density amenities early in the pandemic timeline. Based upon observations of crowding and a lack of adherence to public safety measures at many parks, it was decided further to close parking lots at all applicable parks, which is 23 out of the 41 parks. But all 41 city parks remained open, which is still the case now. The goal of the parking lot closures was to reduce the numbers of people attempting to use many of the closed amenities, effectively turning parks into neighborhoods within walking distance amenities rather than city or regional attractions. This was especially important at our sports parks, notably Ronald Reagan and Pat Burtzoff. The parks did experience a decrease in visitation as stay-at-home orders were practiced. Some amenities were not available, and even recently, parking lots, excuse me, parking lots being closed versus park closures have been a point of confusion. Next slide, please. So last week at the direction of the City Council, all park parking lots were reopened effective April 30th, with the exception of five of the sports parks, Reagan, Burtzoff, Harvest and Community, Palomadillo, Stone and Temecula Hills. Those five sites' parking lots remain closed in order to discourage large-scale sports activities and reduce usage of closed amenities. Following updated county orders as well as part of our internal weekly discussions on operational adjustments, the city reopened the dog parks at Red Hawk and Margarita. And I have to say that the folks at Red Hawk have been the poster children for responsible uses at the dog park with social distancing and their supportive ranger efforts. We really appreciate it. We have also reopened limited park amenities, pickleball tennis courts at Paula and Margarita Parks, and supporting restrooms at Paula, Margarita and Red Hawk. While for now, parking lots remain closed at other sports parks as well as other amenities. Sergio Riot is our supervisor too over our park ranger program. And per council's request last week, will provide city park observations from the ranger and field perspective. So with that, Sergio.
Good morning, all. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor and council members. So what I'm going to go over is a rundown of what the park rangers who are out in the field have observed and experienced since the decision to open the parking lots last Thursday. So, thank you, Jonathan. Okay, so while they've been out there, they've noticed that the parking lots are at about 50% capacity as opposed to the normal 100%, I would say 90 to 100% prior to the COVID outbreak. So they have definitely gone up, but they are not seeing the usage that they saw prior to the pandemic. They are observing that social distancing is occurring in an 80 percentile among the patrons at all the parks except for Harvest and Lake Park, which may have something to do with the fact that the park is smaller. It's a popular park. It could have to do with the sidewalk and the narrow grass areas. But for whatever reason, overall, social distancing is being practiced in an 80 percentile. Now, mask-wearing, however, is down significantly than weeks prior. It's what they're observing is that only 20 to 30% of patrons are wearing their masks. Now, overall, patrons are very, very, very good at obeying the amenities closed policy right now. They're staying off of things like the playgrounds, picnic shelters, picnic benches, tables. For the most part, they are complying with those requests, and the rangers receive relatively little pushback. I mean, there's always that 10, 20% that are going to argue or ask questions, to which the rangers as ambassadors recognize the role simply to inform and educate and hopefully gain compliance through that. Now, however, there are a few amenities that patrons are not adhering to their closure. And that is the pump track and the skate park at Ronald Reagan, which our rangers have observed are continually being used pretty much throughout the entire day by about five to 10 patrons at any given time. Now, as you can see, the photos at the top of the slide, I recognize they're not the best quality, but they are actually photos that our park rangers have taken out in the field. And so despite the fact that the skate park itself is fenced in and the pump track has been, it has signs up, it has caution tape around it, notifying the public that it is closed, it is still being used by members of the public, mostly teenage, early young adult age people. So that is something to keep an eye on, I guess. The other thing is that fishing at Harvest and Lake has continued to be really one of the amenities that the public just can't get away from fishing. They love fishing. And so our rangers have observed that that is constantly not being observed. Next slide. So due to the observations from our staff that is out in the field, our recommendations are, number one, just to reiterate what Kevin said, reopen the balance of park parking lots and then postpone the reopening of other amenities pending additional orders, guidelines that are going to come down from the county or state. The reason why we want to keep things like the pump track and skate park closed this time, play structures, is for example, the pump track and skate park is prone to crowding. If we were to reopen that, we could attract crowds that could potentially infect lots of individuals. If we're experiencing five to 10 at this moment when it's closed, we could easily see it doubled or tripled if we were to reopen. We also recommend, for the time being, keeping the play structures and picnic shelters closed because those surfaces are high-contact surfaces. And currently, we do not have the means to disinfect them or wipe them down between usage. And then lastly, we recommend, for the time being, the closure or the continued closure of the hockey rinks, the basketball courts, and all the sports fields because we would anticipate that if we did reopen those fields, we would have large numbers of organized sports activity which can bring significantly large crowds, including spectators, participants, of course, which that would also pose a risk to the public. Anyway, thank you. If you guys have any questions for me, please feel free to ask whatever you have, and I'll be more than happy to answer as best I can.
Thank you very much for that presentation, both of you guys. You did a great job. I'm just going to ask my colleagues to let me acknowledge you. Keep your comments or your speakers on mute just so, you know, I'm not dealing with multiple different conversations going on at the same time. So since we're in community services, let's go to our president, councilmember Zach Schwank.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we're just clarifying right now that we are only asking questions of staff. We do have public comments for the record on this item.
Okay. Any questions?
Good morning, Mayor Sue and everyone. Director Hawkins, Sergio, thanks for the presentation. My only question right now is of our city attorney. And the one thing I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly is, given the conversations we saw yesterday at the county and what's going on at the state, if you'd be so kind as to just reiterate some of the requirements that we are still under here in Riverside County and especially here in our city of Temecula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The state order that has been in effect since the middle of March, the stay-at-home order, does provide that there are certain recreational amenities that can go forward. And in the frequently asked questions that are attached to that by the State Department of Public Health, they state that it is okay to go outside for a walk, to exercise and participate in healthy activities as long as you maintain a safe physical distance of six feet and gather only with members of your household. And then they go on to provide a non-exhaustive list of those outdoor recreational activities. So under the state order, there is still the requirement for six-foot social distance separation and to maintain that with, only with, don't gather with people other than members of your household. The county order is similar to that, but we don't know whether or not that's going to stay in place after the board meets tomorrow. And we also don't know what additional guidelines the state is going to come down with tomorrow. Is there loosening up some of their orders?
All right, thank you. Mr. Nagar, any questions of staff? Nope. Mr. Ron?
Yeah, just a couple. So you mentioned a lot of non-compliance in pump tracks, skate park, you know, that sort of thing. What, if anything, can we do for more of a hard shut on of those facilities? Because, you know, unlike a play structure or whatever, you know, it's a little bit more difficult. We don't have fencing around that and be able to lock down or whatever those. And if we're getting non-compliance and creating centers of risk and potential exposure, what, if anything, can we do to help mitigate that?
Well, one thing that we've done is we've upped the number of patrols from our park rangers to, if they're stopping by frequently, like every hour, every 45 minutes, every half hour, eventually, those that are violating the closure policy, they eventually just give up and say, "I'm not going to come back because if I'm being kicked out or asked to leave every half hour." Now, unfortunately, there's going to be timeframes in which our rangers can't get out there. So we do ask for help from the police department to also patrol and make the announcement that the amenity is closed. At this time, other than barricades, signs and caution tape around the pump track, that's really all that we have as far as physical barriers keeping trespassers out. I don't know if a conversation could be had with our parks maintenance about maybe putting some some other type of barrier that could keep them out. It's a little more definitive. The problem is, the problem is that this is such a popular attraction that people are willing to, I mean, they are jumping the fence at the skate park to get the skate park. And that, I can't imagine that there's anything short of like an electric fence that would keep these bikers out because they want to get in there and they're willing to risk their health to do so.
Sergio, if I can add, and councilman, if I can add, and that's something that we experienced prior to COVID, where folks were jumping the fence in order to use the skate park or whatnot. A lot of times, we try to rely upon just social pressure, you know, peer pressure. We're doing our social media shorts and we get traction that way. And we've reached out to folks that we think are leaders in that, you know, respective group. But ultimately, it's going to come down to just self-compliance. And we try to balance that with, you know, youth exuberance versus the safety issues too. But again, we were trying to balance whether to be kind of this punitive, you know, presence and enforcement presence versus, you know, informative and ambassadors. I think the rangers are doing a good job walking that line right now.
Are there any, you know, and I don't want to get too draconian with it, but something on the pump track that physical barriers to use, say, K-rails or something along those lines that wouldn't, you know, damage the infrastructure, obviously, but, you know, prevent folks from, you know, taking advantage of it in the interim?
I personally hope we don't get to that point. Similar to our decision to leave, you know, the parks open, we get it. And we're going to trust that common sense prevails and our rangers will try to provide a presence. And then we hope that as we're all monitoring that, at some point in the near future, we'll get some guidelines that speak to that and maybe have the ability to really kind of reopen what we really want to provide. But at this point, it's a balance, and I hope we can continue that. I would hate for us to take more draconian measures. But that's just how I feel personally. But, you know, each week, I meet with the ranger team and they provide feedback and, you know, real-world, you know, observations. And at this point, I have not gotten that from the ranger team, and I hope we don't go that far personally.
Fair enough. And then last one is, you know, the pictures you showed were a little disturbing, right? I mean, it just looks like a regular, you know, Saturday morning at the park in some of those. I mean, you know, have we done any outreach with the schools and the parents on this? I mean, you know, if that were my kid, I'd want to know that, you know, when they leave the house, you tell them, you know, "Oh, I'm just going for a bike ride," or "I'm just doing this." And then you find out later that's not at all what was happening. You know, is there a way for us to sort of, you know, fuzz out the faces and, you know, put sort of a notice out to parents or the school or, you know, whatever it happens to be, to just basically say, "Hey, look, you know, do us a favor." And if you weren't aware, you know, maybe you should be. And if you wouldn't mind, you know, reaching out to your kids again and letting them know to be safe out there is important. You know, I don't know what the options are, but it'd be great to explore something along those lines.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that if you'd like.
Can we get Kev on that real quick?
Yeah, let's get Kevin.
I'm sorry. I think they're all good ideas, and we'll definitely, we're making notes. I think right now with distance learning, it's a little different dynamic, just in terms of reaching out to the schools. But I think we've done a pretty good job just in terms of our social media and our relationships. You know, our staff, you know, a lot of times, they're regulars, right? And they engage them, you know. And right now, we don't have our typical park or community services staff out there, but the ranger personnel are aware of the individuals. And so they've made contact and they made notes. And a lot of times, you know, there's short-term compliance and there's a lot of pent-up, you know, just. I get that, and if there's anything that we can do to mitigate it, we will too. I know that there are relationships here on the council in terms of the biking community too. We'll definitely explore that as well too. But all options are on the table. We're definitely making note of that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Mr. Nagar, you had a comment.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Mr. Ron brings up an interesting line of questioning. Yesterday, I was very proud of Sheriff Bianco in front of the Board of Supervisors, in which he said he is absolutely, positively not going to enforce these type of rules. And so I wonder just where do we really want to stand as far as our staff enforcing those type of rules? And don't get me wrong, I think it's probably difficult to maintain the pump track, you know, in an organized fashion. And I know that everybody wants to, you know, wants to obey the social distancing and all that. But the broader question is, do we as a city want to employ our staff to be the monitors to ensure that people are wearing masks and social distancing? I don't think we have the manpower to do that, and I don't think we necessarily want to put our staff in that position. So city manager, there's a question in all this, Mr. Mayor. What is our position, either Kevin or Aaron, in relation to that? Do we feel that we need staff to be the enforcers? The sheriff's not going to, and we certainly don't have more authority than the sheriff.
Well, I think the, I don't want to use the word enforcement because our rangers don't have police authorities and policing powers. But we've interpreted, you know, the county orders and the state orders to be largely falling down and back on local government to monitor and to follow up. So I do interpret a responsibility to maintain and uphold these orders that are coming down from higher levels of government. Now, I want to make it clear, our rangers and our law enforcement aren't writing citations and misdemeanors. They're simply being used for education and discouraging where appropriate in light of the current health orders and the public health officer. So I feel like we're handling things as best we can, and I know every local city is operating similarly. Not heavy-handed, but more in an education.
Did I, am I?
I'm sorry. Kevin, did you want to add anything to that? I think, Mike, your video audio froze up.
Yeah. No, Aaron, I think you, no, I think the team has done a good job just in terms of balancing. I think you've made it clear and the council's made it clear that we want to be responsible, but we don't want to be heavy-handed, and I think they've.
I dropped out for some reason.
That's all right. Kevin's responding right now.
Yeah. No, Mike, we were just talking about that. We're trying to create a balance in that, as Aaron said, rangers nor PD are going and enforcing and inciting. They're reminding and trying to provide a balance and educating. You know, I was reminded by the team too that a lot of times, it isn't just the youth who are just kind of riding over too. Sometimes, parents are actually dropping them off to these closed amenities as well too. And we understand that. And so it does put, you know, the staff in a difficult situation because most of our staff are Temecula residents, and they get it too. You know, so they have the professional hat that's on, where they have a job to uphold. And then they also too, you know, want to utilize and understand the need. And so I think you can be very proud, like I am, of the team because, again, they're trying to advocate on behalf of the city and trying to be responsible as we're all trying to figure this out. And when grace can be provided, grace is provided too. You know, it's not the heavy-handed. We're not pulling out any ticket books or whatnot. And then, you know, just anecdotally, we just try to use examples. Hey, you know what? I know you want to use this. We're seeing some changes. Can you just, you know, maybe, you know, just ride in open space right now too? So I don't have to come back. We don't have to talk about social distancing and maybe, you know, we can take other measures. And so I've seen all the techniques and all the tools, and it's tough. But I think we're walking a pretty good line right now.
A couple of, just sort of follow-up. So in theory, or in practicality, I should say, our park rangers are the primary contact, and they may be at a park, and they may observe something. And in a friendly manner, they go, "You should be wearing a mask," or "You should have social distancing." Would that be a fair, would that be kind of a fair way they're handling? Did I describe it somewhat accurately?
Yeah, and I hope Sergio is doing it justice here too. I mean, that could be one technique, okay? There could be.
I mean, since they're not enforcing, what other techniques are there?
Sergio, do you mind jumping in?
Yes, yeah, not at all. Yeah, Mr. Nagar, that is exactly how our rangers carry it out. I mean, they might, is in a friendly manner that's definitely not enforcement-minded, but they enlightened the public. And oftentimes, the public isn't even aware that some of these things, I mean, I don't know how people couldn't be unaware with the news and all, but sometimes people are unaware of these, for example, when there was the mask-wearing order coming down from the governor. And so the rangers just explain and have a friendly conversation with the public. Sometimes, they aren't receptive, but overwhelmingly, people are completely receptive to the rangers, just kind of informing them and educating them. And it seemingly does work.
Okay, and so in that vein, aren't we spread a little thin? I don't know that we have that type of manpower. I mean, are we circulating through all of these sports parks? And what do we spend an hour at one and then go to the next one? And I know we have, what, three park rangers or four?
We currently have three park rangers, but we also have some of our sports staff and some of our theater staff helping out. So we actually currently have six people working as park rangers at the moment. And they are assigned to hit all the parks on either the south side or the north side, depending on their assignment for that day. And so that's about, you know, 18 sites that they visit. They spend between a half hour to 45 minutes at each site, talk to any number of people at each park, and answer any questions the public might have, and then they move on. It is definitely, I mean, we are spread thin, and that's why we're doing the best that we can. But it definitely, it's not easy. But they have, I must say that they have been the most vital city staff out there during this crisis, and they're doing a very good job.
Sergio, if I, I'm sorry, Mike, and can I add? And Mike, in addition to our core ranger team and some of the repurposed staff too, as well as the eyes and ears from park maintenance too, I can almost add you to that too. There was an incident, obviously, at Henegaard that kind of caught us the other day. And a lot of times, that's what we rely on. We hope it's not coming from a council person. But we get calls and say, "Hey, did you know this?" And so the community has stepped up, and so I wanted to acknowledge and thank you for that too, so.
Sure. So you run across things like that. Aaron, I fully understand why you would not use the term enforcement, okay? So thank you for pointing that out. It isn't an enforcement. It's a gentle informational type. My last question, and I won't camp on it, I'll save some things for comments, is the governor's order did explicitly allow for BMX riding. And we can talk about what that is, whether it applies to pump tracks. I can't imagine it just means riding your bike because he singled out BMX riding. So I wonder, I just wonder where that, but I'll save that for later.
I thank you for bringing that up, and that's actually a question that we've been posing through our industry as well. And we're waiting for more specificity on that too, as it relates to kind of pump tracks and closed and structures too. And right now, there's a lot of silence, and so that's on our list, what we're monitoring too.
Thank you, Kevin and Aaron. And Sergio, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I apologize for being late. I was having technical difficulties. You'd think six Zoom meetings a day would be enough, apparently not. So did we talk about signage at the parks, saying that masks are, you know, suggested? And Peter, does that raise our liability any?
No, you don't have any obligation to post signs at the park. And if you do, you don't have any liability for not posting them, and you don't have any liability if you do post them.
And so has that been a consideration? Putting signs that, you know, suggesting that people wear masks under the governor's ordinance? Or do we think that that's going to change soon enough that we don't want to go to the trouble of getting the signs made and posted? By the time, things are changing every day. So by the time we do that, you know, are we going to see another change where masks are no longer required? I don't know, but.
Well, I'll just briefly share, and I think you guys all know. Well, I'll just, I'll just briefly share, and I think you guys all know this, but. You know, the county has the uh authority to be stricter than the state of California. So as we sit here today on May sixth, we're still under stricter county orders with respect to mask wearing. Then we otherwise would if the Board of Supervisors had rescinded the orders last night. So this is a fluid situation. Um, so uh, you know, going to the um extent of printing multiple uh signs and things. Um, uh, only to have it potentially changed tomorrow, Friday, or maybe Tuesday. Um, I think we're going to rely heavily on on our human personnel to, again, do the friendly reminders and. And 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 I don't want it to get lost in this conversation. Most folks um are seemingly being uh responsible out there, and that's, that's, that's good. And we'll just continue to 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 be uh gentle and and reminders and um and. You know, and that, and I think that's, that's gonna, that's gonna work.
And I think there's some residents that are actually doing the policing. Um, we've gotten several emails from people who are complaining about other people telling them they should be wearing masks and, you know. Um, in different situations, even outside, so. So I think that is going on to some extent also, but you know, at some point. Um, we can only make people so safe, and after that, it's got to come down to a personal responsibility and accountability. For yourself, your kids, and your family. Um, and you know, that's where we kind of have to draw the line.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann, and I and I am asking everybody to keep their uh. Muted while we're in discussion, just so if you decide to make a comment, it just doesn't blur it out, so. Um, I have a couple of questions, too. So Kevin, have you gotten requests for organized sports to start up again? Like, like, say, if a a park were to open, are you, are you already getting those requests? Because I'm kind of surprised that we would even be in that situation yet, you know, so what's what's your say on that?
Yeah, I, and and Sergio, I'm going to have you jump in. Yes, we've been getting requests, and initially, we were getting a lot more requests. Sergio uh actually has sports um underneath him, too, and so Sergio, if you can provide some feedback on that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, but believe it or not, we have received requests from uh some of the groups. Uh, in particular, more of the travel, uh, travel club nature than um rec sports. Um, the youth soccer league canceled their season, and I believe one of the youth baseball leagues canceled their season. But some of the other uh sports are still kind of just waiting on word to when they can start again. And I'm receiving weekly emails uh with requests to start. You know, can we start next week? Can we start in two weeks? Um, so people are are still very eager to get out there, uh, even given the the risks that, you know, uh. You know, uh, twenty twenty kids on a on a field uh poses. Um, but yes, people are still very much uh eager to get out there and play organized sports.
Okay, um, also, does the um, are masks required while exercising, Peter?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question. It's not covered in the FAQs for the county.
Okay.
Mask requirement comes from the county, so we'll find out on Friday whether that stays in effect.
Okay, but presently, i- is the order that if you're outside in public, no matter what you're doing, you're supposed to have a mask on?
Yes, it's silent as to as to uh uh the exercising. There are exceptions for breathing, so you might interpret that as as allowing it for exercising.
Right.
But uh, uh, yeah, that's, that it's the county's requirement for the mask.
So that's interesting. E- explain that for breathing. Uh, I I have not heard that.
Well, i- there's exceptions for small children, uh, because the the mask may impair their breathing. Uh, there's got to be an exception uh for somebody who has difficulty breathing to be wearing that mask. Um, so they they have to somehow deal with that. Uh, but again, those are issues that the county uh has to be dealing with. Um, but I haven't seen anything uh yet specifically addressing exercising.
Okay. All right, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mike.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you asked a question I was going to ask, and um, uh, there's a lot of people watching this meeting. And uh someone just sent me the current county protocol as of April twenty ninth. Face coverings are not required to be worn by people who are at home. In the car alone or with members of their own household. Children under the age of two years old due to the risk of suffocation. Outdoors, walking, hiking, bicycling, or running. However, people must comply with social distancing during these activities. Including maintaining at least at least six feet of distance from other people. People should have uh a face mask or covering readily accessible. And then the last one is residents with a health condition whose medical doctor has advised against wearing a face covering. And uh can provide documentation. So in essence, when you're outdoors exercising, you are not required to wear a mask at this time.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah, and and thank you for that, and Betsy just clarified that for me as well.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so I think we're going to go on to public comments, Betty.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Be- Mr. Mayor, before we we move there real quick, I know Captain Hall is um on this call. Um, and I know some council members um um asked about enforcement stuff. Captain Hall, did you, did you want to speak to that, or?
Maybe not. I got the impression that he um wanted to speak to that, so we'll come back to that. Thanks.
All right, so let's go on to public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have some public comments. Um, I believe we have um five of them. And I will now go ahead and read those comments into the record pursuant to the notice on the agenda. Uh, the first comment is by Ann Mauser. And Ann sent in two separate emails. Her first email states, I have been an original homeowner at Harveston Lake since April fourth, two thousand and five. As a very proud homeowner of our Harveston community, I value the beautiful amenities that are available. Unfortunately, our nation and world has been struck with this devastating pandemic. Thank goodness our great Governor Newsom acted very quickly to enforce strict guidelines. Lines to be followed by guidelines to be followed by all residents of California resulting in lower fatalities than other parts of our country. I am seventy-seven years old and a senior and have witnessed the guidelines not being followed throughout Harveston. Possibly resulting in sickness and death. I must, I miss getting out as much as anyone. However, these regulations must be met in our community, or we will never be safe. I urge the council to strictly enforce the social distancing as residents and non-residents are not abiding by the governor. By Governor Newsom's outlines. I am wondering what is going, what is going to, what it is going to take to have people listen? Please, please, I challenge you to drive around our community to see these being broken. I drove my car to the mailbox and counted forty-three people walking around, and only two people had masks on. There were two families that were having a picnic on the front lawn by the lake house. Thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you regarding this matter. A concerned citizen of Harveston Lake. She also sent a follow-up email to this stating. I sent this letter to you last week regarding Harveston Lake issues. I hope the Temecula City Council will take better precautions. In keeping our neighborhood safe. Our news every day keeps warning us to socially distance ourselves as well as wear masks when we are outside. If city council members would visit Harveston, you would definitely see these rules are continuously being broken. Please, please, Temecula City Council needs to step up to the plate and enforce this. Thank you. The next speaker is Diana Joseph. And Diana writes, Lisa Sanchez has asked me to share my experience with you as I am one of the original owners. Who bought a lot on the lakefront. I am horrified what the city is not doing. The traffic on the walking path around lake is getting out of control. I can no longer walk my ten-pound dog as he was run over last year by a kid on a bike. And it's not, please text. To have scareboarders come right by, to ha- I think she's trying to say she's having skateboarders come right by me. You are slowing the path to be used for too many purposes by too many people. I won't even bring out the rest of the issues like run o-. Run over animals. What a disappointing work or lack of it by the city. The next speaker is Kyla Murphy. I live at Harveston and I'm concerned about the lack of social distancing at Harveston Lake path. I appreciate the city's response to COVID nineteen and do not want the city to open Temecula businesses, parks, and public spaces too soon. I have health concerns for myself and many neighbors. I know that I am entitled to equal access to public facilities, but we cannot access Harveston Lake paths safely until social distancing measures are observed. With Friends of Harveston Lake, I supported two previous letters asking for the temporary closure. And I still believe closure is needed until the risk of contracting COVID nineteen has diminished according to state authorities. I believe that sign was not supposed to be taken down. The Harveston Lake should not be able to reopen yet. There are still so many COVID nineteen cases. The next speaker is Jessica Ward. I would like this comment to be read during the public comment section. My name is Jessica Wer- Ward, and I am a longtime board member of Temecula Little League. We are asking that the parking lots at the large parks Ronald Reagan, Birdsong, and Harveston be open so people can start using them for recreation on a larger scale. Also, with the acceleration of the state into phase two of the reopening plan, we are also reaching out to ask that athletic fields be opened before. The end of the current closure period set to expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty. While we understand opening up athletic fields is low on the priority level at this time because there are a ton of businesses around Temecula still closed. We wanted to include a comment during the park's reopening discussion on our players' behalfs. With the guidance from Governor Newsom to allow counties to accelerate certain aspects of reopening. We are hoping this is a good time for a sort of soft opening in preparation for phase three. We are requesting that baseball fields be allowed to be used in groups no larger than fifteen. Required to limit physical contact, similar to how tennis courts, pickleball, and golf have opened. Baseball is very low contact sport, and allowing players to use these fields in limited capacity. Will allow them to pitch hit balls, practice infield outfield drills, all with extremely limited contact. We think this will be a great outlet for kids who have been stuck inside for weeks with no ability to fully practice their athletic hobbies. The youth of Temecula have had their entire world flipped upside down. Schools are closed, they can't play outside with their friends, and their sports seasons have been closed down before they really got underway. Our intent is to give our players some sense of normalcy as the state continues to slowly open up. We know that phase three of the governor's plan includes reopening of gyms and sporting events without live audiences. We feel that resumption completely of youth sports falls within this category. And both the board of directors and our families have the understanding of the social distancing aspect. That it would be required to have players back on, back out onto the field in full swing for games. Our organization is at its largest numbers in years, serving over six hundred players and their families. And we have commitment from ninety percent of those families to move forward with the summer season. We are looking forward to partnering with the city on the idea recommended approach. And our current plan is to space out players in the dugout and bull- bullpens. Hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer stations in every dugout. Wipe down the balls between each half inning and recommend our players perform temperature checks before each practice and game. All of these things, while different than normal play, will allow our coaches, players, families to conform to the state health guidelines. While participating in something that is good for their mental and physical health. We appreciate your time and consideration of these requests. Thank you. And the last speaker is Lisa Sanchez. I am a seventeen-year Harveston owner, homeowner, and the founder in two thousand and five of Friends of Harveston Lake. I'm representing Harveston residents and visitors, uh, thirty-six of whom have submitted their names in support of this letter. In addition to numerous supporters who signed on to our April sixth and April twenty letters who submitted statements to the April twenty eighth city council meeting. At the close of that meeting, council agreed to keep Harveston quote, "closed" along the Reagan and along with Reagan and Birdsong. Our focus is on Harveston Lake Park exclusively because it's Temecula's most popular mixed-use destination park. And the only park that has been subjected to repeated crowding after stay-at-home orders. From a practical standpoint, it has never been closed due to the extensive street access. We remain in dire need of protective measures to mitigate safety hazards due to continued COVID nineteen risks. As well as in the absence of coronavirus. These hazards include crowding, social distancing failures, and unsafe speeds by motorized scooters, skateboards, and bikes. We've surveyed Temecula parks since March and would like to see strategies from other parks applied at Harveston. Specifically, we request. One-way signs to facilitate social distancing such as those used at the Santa Rosa Plateau, Silver Lake Park, and other places. Signs indicating no electric motorized scooters or segways and no skateboards. As at Temecula Creek Park and others. Signs on and beside the path to illustrate six feet social distancing. Minimize bicycle risks by splitting the path and marking the concrete with bike and walker icons. Parking restrictions for crowd control such as intermittent red on no parking curbs as used in, as used at Asheville. And Harveston or resident-only parking signs on one or both sides of Lakefront Road, Balboa, etc. To illustrate the problem, our team collected one hundred and fifty-nine photos and videos of significant to severe crowding at Harveston in April and May. Along with seventy-one instances of overcrowded street parking. Examples include thirteen people crowded into a ten-by-fifteen space on April fourth. Twelve people passing closely in five seconds on April seventeenth. And twenty-four passing closely in one point five minutes last Friday, three days after the council stated that Harveston was to remain closed. These encounters go on for hours on busy days. On that same day, Friday, May first, we found zero to four people and no social distancing problems at Red Hawk Dog Park. Lennon, Margarita, and Reagan Sports Parks. But counted fifty-eight people in three minutes in one corner of Harveston, the majority passing way inside the six feet. Since other Temecula parks have been safe with the implementation of effective rules and signs, we are not concerned about enforcement. We want our staff and Rangers to be safe, as noted in the April twenty-eighth meeting. Don't homeowners and visitors deserve to be safe, too? Due to the beautiful lake park and surrounding houses, Harveston is a destination that attracts people of diverse ages and activities. It's not comparable to Reagan or Birdsong, which attract a younger, lower-risk crowd. Energetic teens and adults on motor scooters and skateboards rarely share space with elderly and active senior walkers. Disabled people and parents with babies and small children at these other parks. We are considerate, law-abiding citizens who have stayed inside for over a month, and we need a safe public access. To Harveston Park for our own health and well-being and that of our families. Some of us have health conditions or disabled children, others simply want to stay safe, healthy, and coronavirus-free. Our park sign reads, keep our city parks beautiful and safe for all to enjoy. That is all we are asking. Should you wish to see the data my team has collected, please provide a way to submit it as city email filters block some attachments. And that comment is signed by Lisa Sanchez, Diana Joseph, Norman Nelson, Kyla Murphy, Leonor Bentley, Jason Henderson, Vernon Kenimer. Sherry Douglas, Diane Sarabar, um, Norman Nelson, Ursula Antonelli, Diane Q, Chris Valdez, Renee Burke, Mills Vaco. Ryan Polley, Caitlin Sanchez, Susan Melcher, Susan Se- Saboda. Judy Tobar, Debbie Lyon, Norman Martinez. Peggy Sanchez, Munin Salgado, Karen Doherty, Janay Sharf, Kimberly Kemp. Laura Reese, Frank Petnato, Judy Petnato, Gabriela Cas- Casario, Brian Casario, Nancy Young, Miriam Jamie Hamilton. Ann Mauser, Tammy Sims, Colleen Calvert, Laura Willingham, Diane Thornton, and Renee Lazar. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right, so we'll get into the discussion part, and I'm again going to ask my colleagues to indulge me on this. Wait until I call on you, and you'll have plenty of time to give me your opinions or give us all our opinions. Um, let's start again with uh the president of T C S D, Mr. Schwenk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I guess I have a few things. Um, I think a couple of things that I really want to point out is everything that we've heard so far is the the necessity to. We we have a responsibility um as elected leaders and as a city uh to. to follow some guidelines, right? Like that is one thing that we should be doing. There should be a strong, consistent message coming from the city with respect to what we want to see the public do. I know there was some conversation about how do we enforce that and should we, should we not enforce that? And you know, I have full confidence in our park rangers that they are clearly educating and and doing their best given the certain circumstances that we're dealing with. So, so I'm not so concerned about turning the, turning this into an enforcement issue with respect to parking lots and things like that. I'm again extremely proud and confident in the work that they're doing and let's be realistic, they certainly have their hands full. We have a very large, beautiful city with a ton of parks and I think that they're doing the best they can. I think we could do, and we have been doing a great job with PSAs. I think we could continue to do that. I think that's really where we shine in getting the message out and really educating folks on what the requirements are and not, not trying to say, well, we're just not going to enforce that. And like, this is the reality of what we're dealing with right now. Let's be realistic. These are the public health orders and let's try to follow those. So I think it's important that we do that. We have a good, strong, consistent message for the public to digest and get the information that they need. Because let's be honest too, there's, there is a lot of misinformation out there about what, what we're required to do or what we should do and what we think we should do. And I read this on Facebook or I saw this on YouTube and let's be realistic, coming from the city, we need to have that just dialed-in message. And I believe we, we do have that. If you look at our PSAs and you look at what what Director Hawkins is doing in his shop through TCSD and their Facebook page and whatnot. So we, we've got that. With respect to opening the balance of the parking lots, I think, you know, I think we're headed in that direction, right? But I think it's important that we continue to either add signage, deal with some of the nuances of our park system if we open everything. And we, much like where we're saying Temecula is unique in certain ways, there's different parks in our, in our system that are completely unique. I mean, you heard the comments today about Harvest and Lake and, and let's be realistic, it is a destination park. It is a unique park. We have a comment as well of wanting to open the sports field. So that sort of goes to your question, Mayor Stewart, about opening sports fields and are we ready for that? And so whether we, whether we do some stencils on the ground and sort of, you know, figure ways to message to folks at our parks, what does that look like? Is it, you know, I heard a one-way, is that, is that feasible? Are we, are we able to do that? And then are we trying to enforce a one-way rule with, you know, excluding skateboarders and things like that? So are we able, even able to manage to do that? I do think on, on, you know, with respect to the skate park and the pump track. And, and listen, there's nobody that wants to open that pump track more than me. I mean, I was at the opening. That was an amazing event and, and, and the amount of folks that continually use that. And I get probably more questions on that on a daily basis of when is that going to open? People are chomping at the bit to get that open, but I think we need to, we need to see, you know, what comes down from, you know, not just the governor on Thursday or Friday morning, but what comes down from Riverside County with respect to, are we going to continue with stricter regulations? Are they going to go back to just sort of fall underneath what the county's saying? So I mean, I think, I think there's more work we can do with respect to education and, and I won't say enforcement. But education is certainly a key component to anything we do. It's, it's, it's engineering education enforcement, right? So education has to be a major component of that. So, you know, I certainly like to hear from the balance of my colleagues, but moving forward, we certainly need to, we need to keep our finger on the pulse with everything. And, and as things change, we need to be able to pivot quickly and, and, and most importantly, I think we need to be responsible. We need to be responsible to public health. I mean, ultimately, that's the, that's the goal of all this is not to be punitive to, to a sports team or to someone riding a BMX bike, but to, to public health and the most important thing of all is keeping people safe.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Nigar, what's your comments?
Here we go. Okay, thank you. I'll be real quick. You know, clearly the governor is moving toward relaxing restrictions. He's already telegraphed that we're moving into what he calls phase two, which is loosening up restrictions. Regarding the pump track, you know, using it by its very nature is going to provide social distancing. I don't think people are within six feet of each other, but if you guys want to paint something on the ground in the queue that, you know, are like they do at Home Depot or the market six feet away from each other so they wait before they can do that, that's fine. If you want to keep it closed until you can think of a way to do it adequately, I'm fine with that as well. But let's find a way to do it. It's an incredible outlet for a low-risk, you know, portion of COVID. And really, we're heading in the summer, that sucker's got to be open. But I will, with those recommendations, I'll certainly defer to you, Kevin, and your staff. The other thing I do want to say is we heard a lot about Harvest and and listen, the only thing I could say is Harvest is a public park. It's extremely expensive for the city to maintain. If, if hundreds or thousands of people want to go to Harvest and Park and they're obeying the rules that, or we hope they're obeying the rules, then I would encourage them to use it. It's like any other park and I just don't think there should be any restrictions whatsoever other than the ones that we're, we're asking people to do regarding social distancing. Social distancing is kind of tricky. I don't know how people go out there and count who is adequately social distancing or not. I could be out there with my family of four and we all qualify for social distancing because we all live together. But who could tell whether or not that's the case or a family of six? Granted, there may be a situation where you know people are together that are not part of the same family group. In that case, the ranger group can politely inform which, and, 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 you know, use our public outreach, just like, I don't like the word enforce. I like what you said. Aaron and Sergio were just polite. The idea that, you know, Zach, I can totally support if you want to put some Xs on the ground. And if, if you think it works better to make it one way, certainly you can do that. But regarding the comments from the public, anything that sort, that, that starts to tell the rest of the remainder of the city not to come to a public park, I could not support. So I support staff's item with those comments, which I don't think are really restrictive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron.
No, I think staff, you knocked it out of the park. I mean, you're, you're on, you know, you have your finger on the pulse of what's going on at the parks, you know, what's appropriate and what's not. You know, you've heard, you know, some of the comments, you know, I'm not going to speak to things like one-way signs and other issues because you'll know, you know, certain, certain actions intended to mitigate, you know, some of the effects we're seeing could just by themselves cause other issues. And so, you know, we're going to rely on your expertise to be able to, you know, decide what's appropriate there. But your recommendations are solid and, you know, I think we're, we're good moving forward with that.
All right. Councilmember Edwards. Mayor Brookham Edwards.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've noticed compliance on the times that I go shopping at the store is a hundred percent. You never see people in the grocery store without masks on and they wear them even in the parking lot out to their cars. Some still drive in them. You know, it was news to me that you didn't have to wear masks outdoors only because I've heard so many people complaining about other people not wearing masks outdoors. So I just kind of assumed that we were still supposed to wear them depending on the type of activity outdoors. Obviously, if you can't social distance, then you need to wear a mask, but you're supposed to do both. You know, I think by opening some parks and closing some parks, we're just funneling, we're concentrating people in the parks that are open. But by opening all the parks, that's going to reduce probably the number of people that are harvesting because they can still go to, you know, Reagan, they can still go to Bird's Hall and any other of the beautiful public parks we had. And those people who want to avoid those types of crowds, those parks will be, you know, the smaller parks will be an attraction for them. Push comes to shove, we're dealing with, and I don't, I don't know about data can be anything pretty much that, that, that it needs to be or wants to be right now, depending on what study you believe. But I think anecdotally, we're seeing a pattern. And that pattern is that infections are decreasing overall. The curve is leveling out and in some cases is starting to decline. And the people that are, that are most impacted are in my age group, as much as I hate to admit it, seniors. And, and, and then a subgroup of that would be seniors who have, is it two, three or more underlying conditions? So seniors are always going to have to be more cautious and we are more cautious just in everyday living than, than some people. So we can only make it so safe. There's never going to be anything we can do to guarantee that someone isn't going to catch something or have an accident or something to happen. We can only make it so safe. And then what is that magic number that, that everyone will be happy with? What is the magic number of infections that everyone's going to be happy with? Is it zero? Well, that's never going to happen. So at some point, we have to decide what is, and individuals have to decide what is an acceptable level of risk that I am going to assume for myself and my family. And we do it every day. We do it every day when we travel, when we fly, when we wear seat belts, when we take medicine. I mean, we do it every day. We analyze the risk and we make determinations for ourselves. What is that critical number? What's that level of risk I'm willing to accept? And I think we're just going to have to come down to doing that as a city. We set a level of caution and that could be masks and distancing. And after that, everything is going to be left to those residents. They're going to have to be accountable and responsible to themselves and their neighbors. And Temecula residents are, are very good and very kind and concerned. So it's also going to be a matter of education to let them know that you don't have to wear masks outdoors and you still need to social distance. And even though it could be a temporary fix, and I certainly think we should wait until after the Board of Supervisors meets and see what they decide. I think signage wouldn't be a bad idea. It'd be an expense for the city, but it would certainly be a lot more, a lot easier for us to police and by providing that education on the spot at the parks. I think it would do some good to remind people, because again, a lot of people don't realize what the restrictions are these days. Because they change every day depending on where you are. So at some point, we have to, it has to come down to accountability and personal responsibility. I'm going to watch out for myself, therefore I'm going to wear a mask or I'm going to stay far away or I'm not going to go out of the house at all. We see people doing that every day now. Some people never leave the house. They have other people shop for them. They call out and have things delivered to the house. So that is how they're dealing and creating that level of risk that's acceptable to them. So I think the city needs to look at the entire picture, which also includes what's happening to our businesses. Not that weighing business over public safety isn't, that's not the issue here. I don't want that to become the issue. But some people are losing their businesses right now because people can't go out. So we're, no matter how long we wait, we're going to have to decide what that acceptable level of risk is that we are requiring of other people. And after that, it's going to come down to personal responsibility and accountability. So if we're going to open parks, I think we should open all of them because it will decrease the funneling of crowds to any particular park. And I think residents will level that playing field. I think that some who want to go to parks that are less crowded will go to parks that are less crowded. And so, you know, that's kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Mary. I agree one hundred percent, everything you just said. So, you know, and it is about personal responsibility here. And no one is watching anybody wash hands. You know, if you're, if you are a person who is concerned about this virus, I guarantee you, you're washing your hands every time you can get by a sink. And, but no one's watching anybody do that. There is no law or order saying you have to wash your hands, but there is orders that you have to wear a mask. There is orders you have to stay home. There is orders you have to close your business. But, you know, there is personal responsibility that's involved here for our citizens. And I agree, I think we do need to open our, well, the parks have never been closed. That's, that's the one thing the public needs to know. Our parks, our parks never close. Only the parking lots, and that was due to the county. And the county has said now we have control over those parking lots and we can do this if we so desire. And I agree with Mary Ann in the fact that by opening a couple of our larger parks, it will take pressure off of a Harvest and or these other parks that are experiencing a high volume of people. Because it's, Harvest is a beautiful place. That lake is amazing. Every time I walk, I don't live there either and I walk around it. So, I mean, I get it. I get why people want to go there. But there's also a lot of places that Ronald Reagan, you can walk around and you can throw a frisbee with your kid. Or, you know, there's a lot of opportunities for people to go there and experience. And Mike brought up something in a private conversation about the handicaps. And by closing off these major parking lots, sometimes you're restricting those handicapped people for being able to access the open space that we have available. So I, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of, go ahead and just open the parking lots. We can still keep everything, the, the play equipment and everything closed. And I do like Mike's idea too about the pump track. I mean, they're, they're using it already. So why don't we have a social distancing queue where there's Xs on the ground or there's something, you know, that Kevin and his staff can get together and kind of figure out some, and maybe, maybe it's just a, a cordoned lane where, you know, you have to get your bike into this lane to actually get onto the pump track. Something that's very simple that, you know, you know, and we know kids, kids are kids. The minute you tell them you can't do it, they want to do it. So, and, and that's why they're at the pump track. That's why they're willing to scale the fence to go onto the skate park. Because we all did it too. I mean, we were kids once too. We were always doing something that put ourselves at risk. And so it's going to happen whether we like it or not, or whether we close it or not, or whether we barricade it or not. You know, when, when Matt was saying about the K rails, I could see kids actually using those K rails as some sort of a jump just to enhance the, the whole experience of the, the pump track. So, so yeah, I mean, kids are kids. You're not going to stop kids from being kids either. So it, it doesn't matter. You could wrap it up and, and bubble wrap and it's, they're still going to find a way in and do what they're going to do. So I think we've got to rely and, and like Matt was saying, we need to rely on parents taking their kids under their wing or letting them know, hey, this is available, but I don't want you to do it because. And so it goes down to personal responsibility to the parents also. You know, if they're, if they're that concerned about their kid coming down with COVID, which that is a huge odd percentage that it could possibly come down to, but anyways, then keep them home, keep them locked up. That's their kid. They have the right to do that. But I don't think we as a city should tell our populace that you have to lock down your kid. And it's, that's not our job, you know? Our job is to provide services for our community, which we have. We, we've controlled them. We've closed them when we were told to. Now we have the ability to open them. I think we should open them. Any other, Zach?
Yeah, just really quickly, you know, I, I certainly value and, and appreciate everyone's opinion. And I think we've come to, come to a spot here that we can all support and especially given the fact that, you know, I don't think it has to be said that the team behind the city of Temecula is, is probably the best out there, right? And so I think I want us to go forward with these recommendations that we've talked about, some signage and move forward. But, you know, trust in the fact that, you know, from our city manager down to our community services director, we can support them administratively moving forward over the next couple of weeks and just let them make these calls like they've got our direction. we can support them administratively moving forward over the next couple of weeks and just let them make these calls like they've got our direction. Uh, we can certainly um, you know, rely on them to make those good calls and go, okay, we were able to, whatever it is at the pump track, we, we feel like we're going to be in a safe spot, so we've done that. Okay, we're going to do stencils on the ground, much like maybe uh Sherro's in Old Town, you know, guidance like that. Those things where we can be really flexible uh and, and use chalk paint or, or some sort of other um, pretty simple um relatively inexpensive means to, to provide some guidance. But again, just rely on them over the next couple of weeks. And then um, you know, I would just respectfully request that as TCSD president, um, I can continue to work with uh our city manager and our director to move these things forward. Uh, um, as, as TCSD president, I think it's important to um have that structure in place for what we're trying to do. And I think we're all on the same page. I think um everyone made some great points. And, and we can certainly look at getting things back open and, and providing access to, to everyone uh in a safe way. And I, I just, I, I really think that's the most important thing, if we can provide access, but it has to be uh for everyone and has to be in a safe way. And, and I think we can get there. Uh, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. Remove staff recommendation.
And I'll second.
And um I did want to add to that, that at staff's discretion, find a way to open up the pump track. And at staff's discretion, uh Zach, I can honor your request, work with the TCSD president to see if there's any type of other mitigation measures that are appropriate, but not overkill. And that would be my motion.
Yeah, and I've got a second.
All right, uh, any final comments? All right.
I will take the roll call vote on this item. Councilmember Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
Councilmember Swank.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. That passes.
And Mr. Mayor, the second item for discussion is the Fourth of July event.
Fourth of July event, okay.
Believe there's a staff report for that as well.
Please, thank you.
Yes, sir, it's, thank you and, and thank you again for your support previously. Um, in addition to city facilities being closed, uh, Community Services has assessed our current programs, events and activities and when possible and allowable, we have either pivoted to a virtual format, attempted to reimagine the event, postpone or cancel. It's never an easy decision, especially for professionals dedicated to providing a wide array of programs, performances and events. But the great thing is, is most of our team, as I mentioned, are Temecula residents and have a great pulse and feel for our special events, which typically end up being Don-tastic. So with that, I would like Don to walk you through our special events process and the considerations for the Fourth of July. Don?
Thank you, Kevin. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's nice to see everyone. Um, the past two months have been testing the creative juices of the special events team, to say the least. We have been busy brainstorming how to turn as many events as possible virtual. With a large number of our events considered signature special events, this has been a challenge. So this slide is just a quick recap for you of our signature special events. So it lists our signature events and the attendance at each of those events. So we have the Easter egg hunt, the Temecula Rod Run, which had been scheduled last weekend, which was perfect weather, by the way. But it has been postponed to August twenty eighth and twenty ninth. Um, the Art and Street Painting Festival, which is going virtual for the first time from June first through the seventh, um, the Fourth of July Parade and the Extravaganza at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park, which is our second largest, most attended event. Halloween Carnival, Patriotic Sloop to Veterans, Santa's Electric Light Parade and the New Year's Eve Grape Drop. Um, next slide, please. Everyone always says how fun my job must be planning events and most days they're pretty accurate. Create family traditions and memories for residents and visitors. But most people don't realize how much work and time goes in behind the scenes and that we're working on multiple events at once. So I thought I might just take a moment to give a quick overview of how long it actually takes to plan out an event. And obviously all events are different, but this is a general idea. So when we're out, one year out, we're selecting a date and a venue. Six to nine months out, registration begins for some larger events like the Rod Run. Six months out, we're booking entertainment and securing uh vendors for rental items, booking security. Three months out, we're selecting vendors and soliciting participants for things like the parade. And then ongoing, we're always finalizing schedules for delivery, security, purchasing of supplies, layouts, staff schedules, volunteers, et cetera. Next slide, please. Now let's get down to the Fourth of July. The events team has been reaching out to other communities and gathering information from the California Parks and Recreation Society to see what other cities are doing. This slide shows the thirty-seven cities that have already canceled Fourth of July activities. And there are other cities that have not yet made a decision. Some of our neighbors have not yet decided, like Elsinore, for example, um, Urieta doesn't always celebrate on the Fourth of July. They have their birthday bash, um, Menifee is still pending, um, and Riverside. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, for the good, the meat and potatoes. What options do we actually have for COVID um nineteen, Fourth of July this year? We've come up with two, hopefully excellent options for you to consider. Um, option A is a virtual July fourth and a postponement. So what does that mean? Our virtual recommendations include encourage residents to turn Temecula red, white and blue by decorating their house or yard, kind of like we've, what we've already done with um City Hall. Sending us patriotic selfies so we can post, we can post patriotic playlists and themed barbecues ideas, food and games. Councilmembers can record some messages for our community. Um, at eight PM, we can have a concert on Facebook Live, which means we can livestream a real concert from Temecula, place to be determined. Uh, and at nine PM, we can have a virtual fireworks with music on the city's website. What does the postponement part mean? Well, that means we'd love to tie our Fourth of July into either New Year's Eve or have a brand new winter festival type event. So I would envision an afternoon to evening event with live music on the stage, our normal vendors, a fun zone for kids, let's bring in some snow because it's winter and doing fireworks at that point. Option B is fire, fireworks only with obviously some major safety restrictions. Those restrictions would include fencing off the entire Ronald Reagan Sports Park, including the parking lots and the sidewalks. No viewing from the park or the sidewalk, our fully hired security team to help enforce no gathering at the park. And additional city staff would be required to help enforce that as well. Next slide, please. So in summary, we do events the Temecula way. A fireworks only show with the needed safety restrictions actually is not that fun and not the Temecula way. An event later in the year would be Temecula safe, put family first and be Temecula fun. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you very much for a great report. I can tell you guys put a lot of hard work into that already. Um, okay, let's start with uh President Swank on the TCSD again.
Thank you, Mayor Siri. I don't have any questions uh right at the moment.
Uh, Mayor Protem Edwards, any questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Ron.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, uh, Mike.
No questions.
Okay, perfect. All right, so with that discussion?
Yes, sir, we can move on to council comments.
Okay, council comments. So what are y'all thinking? Mr. Swank.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, you know, this is tough, right? This is the one, uh, well, I shouldn't say the one because it certainly isn't. And we've canceled virtually everything the city does and we've moved to a virtual world. Um, you know, we've, I think this should be no different. I'll just cut to the chase. I think that um have, hosting this event uh with uh restrictions would be um, would be tough. I mean, think about uh, we, we used to walk to Ronald Reagan Sports Park uh when we lived in that area and just the amount of people just trying to get near it to watch it on a, a day where there's twenty plus thousand people in the park was uh, was borderline chaos. Um, uh, so I, I, so I just can't wrap my head around um actually fencing off the sports park and then enforcing that. There, I mean, that you would have to have a line of people arm in arm to keep people out of that sports park to, to watch our fireworks show. The, because the way that we do it is uh, is certainly, and, and Don, thanks again for the, for the, for the presentation. It's the Temecula way. It's an amazing fireworks show to sit underneath there. Um, so I, I just struggle with the feasibility of something like that. Um, I, I certainly uh could get behind postponing it to a future winter event or sort of um, you know, the end of our Christmas parade would be much like the Disney parade, right? Going down Main Street fireworks after that would be kind of amazing. Um, you know, even just throwing out uh postponing uh this show to the next year and offer a couple of shows in the city, you know, one at Ronald Reagan and then find another place that's, uh, we could ease the burden there and provide for a, a huge number of folks to enjoy. So I, I really have some, some, I struggle with um doing it. Um, I understand some of the, the thinking behind wanting to continue uh with a show like that. But I, but I just struggle with the realities of what that would look like uh on the ground and having staff have to try to, to manage that.
Right, uh, Mayor Protem Edwards.
Uh, actually, I just, I did think of a question as, as Zach was talking. And so it's always a Don-tastic event. They all are. Um, and I know you're already thick in the planning probably, just in case. So what happens if we, I had a rain day on, one of the years I was mayor, I think it was the Christmas parade. My Christmas parade that year, ours parade was rained out. And so that's where you pull everything together, you're ready to go and literally that day, you contact everyone, postpone and you had it a week later or something. And I realized that is very stressful and it's hard on the participants and everything else. But should we continue to plan based on the fact that we might be able to have that event on July fourth? Because if we are able to have it, I certainly would prefer to have it. And again, people are going to have to be responsible for what they consider to be, you know, their own safety and, and what their acceptable level of risk is. But, and I don't want you to have to plan it twice. And Zach, I, I, Don kept a straight face when you said have two sets of fireworks in two different places. I'm proud of you, Don. He kept a straight face. So do we go ahead and plan as if everything, you know, is going to be acceptable and we can have the parade? And then you have to pull the plug at the last minute and postpone? I, I certainly think at the very least we can do fireworks.
I think Aaron has commented on that one.
Yeah, okay.
Don, you can, you can jump in if I get this uh incorrect. But the, the other reason that we're here discussing this is uh we have a contractual obligation with our fireworks vendor. And um they have been very gracious in giving us um till today or a few days from now to make a decision on how we, in direction to them on how we want to handle this situation. So um it's, it's, it's uh, they are willing. Um, if we advise them sooner than later to move our obligation from July fourth to later in the year without losing any money. It's my understanding the vendor will work with us. But as Don mentioned, there's a lot of planning that goes into this thing. Um, and so we need to advise them sooner than later. They've been very gracious, but we've run out of days to wait and we don't know what the congregation orders are going to look like in July fourth. So we're making some assumptions that large groups like we normally get aren't going to be allowed July fourth. And we're looking at what's going on.
Yeah. So then if I could just finish that thought, in lieu of, uh, people look forward to that entire days of worst events every single year and they plan around it, families get together. And I would venture a guess, because you, you all know that I live very close to the sports park. And the streets are, the streets in our little kind of hidden neighborhood over there behind Lynnfield School are lined with cars. And people are very respectful. Uh, they bring their motor homes late in the afternoon and watch. I would venture a guess to say that as many people line up on the streets, parking or walking to areas on the street as do the people, there are same number that are sitting in the sports park watching. I just know, just from looking at the traffic patterns. And Mike, you live pretty close to there too. So you know, your neighborhood's probably um bu- busy with cars on the street as well. I think at the very least we should go ahead with the fireworks display because people can have their celebrations at their homes and still go out for the fireworks display and not have to congregate close together. Uh, they can stay in their car or they can sit right at their car, um, wherever they happen to manage to find a place to park. But I would hate to see us cancel everything just because we can't um get together in the park. And people who are used to coming down to the park are going to have to plan something else and, and then um come down for the fireworks display. And you can see that fireworks display from a long way if you're on a high point. So um they don't even have to get that close to the sports park to be able to see it. But I, I would hate to cancel that one. I think we can, we can do that safely, effectively. And people can then um, you know, be in charge of their own social distancing.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. Um, Mike, what, what's your thoughts? Unmute yourself.
There we go. Thank you. I like the way you said that, unmute yourself. Well, um, something comes to mind uh out of the National Anthem. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, it gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. And that's just where I have to land on this thing. We're not canceling the Fourth of July. Um, if anything, we have to just say we're going to make a stand. So uh in, in um, my position is we have the fireworks. Um, and if people, uh, if we have to cordon off the park, because that's the case, then that's what we do. Um, but we make provisions just in case that doesn't have to happen, as Mary Ann alluded to. It, but the fireworks have to go on. I will tell you too, I'm not opposed to having fireworks again, another time of the year down at Christmas time. Um, if we, you know, want to celebrate something else or, you know, the eradication of the virus and the onset of Christmas, I'm totally open to that. The Fourth of July, that has to go on. That's my two cents.
All right, Councilmember Ron.
So um, i- i- Don, I, I appreciate the, the time uh you put into uh preparing this. Option A, I think, is a preferred option at this point. You know, the, the, the optics uh from, from my perspective on this is, you know, we have city staff that are, you know, furloughed or, or, you know, employees that are worried about their jobs. And then we're having a conversation about spending fifty thousand dollars on, on fireworks. Um, you know, just to get straight to the point. Uh, you know, it, we all want to be patriotic. We all want to do the right thing. But in my mind, the most patriotic thing we can do is make sure people stay safe and be fiscally conservative because we're talking about millions of dollars in budget shortfalls. And we just had a conversation about policing, you know, a uh, uh, a skate park or a pump track and saying how difficult it is for staff to do that. And now we're saying we're going to, you know, light off some fireworks and hope that, you know, everybody, you know, who knows what July is going to bring. But we're going to hope that everybody acts appropriately on July and respects, you know, all of that. And I think the burden to, to staff, to fire, to law enforcement, all of that at that time uh is going to be incredibly challenging because we've never done it before. Um, and so, you know, look, I think, I, I, I like the idea of um, you know, what you proposed. I think it hits the right tone and spirit of what we need to do right now. It doesn't uh create any undue burden or, or potential risk. Because again, we don't know what the world's going to look like, you know, by July fourth. Um, and, and I think, you know, this sets a, a good tone from a fiscal perspective because, you know, we have to take all of that into account right now and show that we're, you know, doing the right thing. Especially facing some of the uh, you know, serious issues that we're, we're having and the conversations I know that are coming in the next, you know, weeks or so, when we start talking about the city's budget. Um, so I'm just, you know, I'm cognizant of all of that. And I think, you know, under this um, under this new scenario, I'm one hundred percent sure that the city and, and Don and her team and everybody else can pull off something that's respectful of, you know, our, our, our country and our patriotism and, and the Fourth of July and, and independence. Um, but also recognizes some of the unique circumstances we're under. Um, and I'll reserve any other comments for later. Thanks.
All right, Mary Ann, you had another comment?
I did. Did we, just um going by what Matt said, did we? We did not skip Fourth of July during the recession, two thousand and eight, nine, ten, eleven. We had celebrations every year, did we not, even when the budget was so tight? I think we did. I'm just trying to remember what we did, but I'm pretty sure that we did. And I think, I think what that does is, I think it sends a message to the residents, a message of hope, a message that Temecula is still here, we still celebrate. A message of hope, a message that Temecula is still here, we still celebrate, um, and we're coming back stronger than ever. So, um, yeah, I think that's good. And Matt, I, I didn't understand. Were you saying you wa- wanted to have the fireworks or you di- didn't want to have the fireworks?
I thought, I thought it was clear. No, I think, I think Don can put on an amazing. Under scenario A, I think that's the appropriate, uh, approach right now.
When you were talking about funding, I thought maybe you were saying that we, and I understand why you have to take that into consideration. But then I didn't, I didn't realize which side you came down on. So, yeah, I, I agree with you.
The, the funding issue, just with respect to the recession, this is a completely, you know, um, different financial situation than anything the city's experienced in this.
I think I, I just wondered because of the, you know, the ti- the times, I guess, and, and the sentiment and the fact that people have been cooped up and, and during the recession, people were kind of in despair, you know? So that's why I just wondered, but I didn't think we canceled. I thought we still had everything. And I think it sends a, a good message and gives people, um, you know, that, um, release valve.
Uh, Don, can you put back up that slide with, uh, option A and option B? Because I have a, I have a thought and I, I just want to look at the option again, or whoever is doing the slide. Could you put that slide back up? Okay. So the virtual Fourth of July.
Virtual Fourth of July, no fireworks. Uh, I know.
You're, you're mute. Put yours on mute, uh, Mike. Um, okay. So what, yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, as far as Erin. So our obligations to the fireworks company, is it possible to do a, a lesser version on the Fourth? So we still, because I agree with Mike. I think it sends a sim- uh, signal to our people that we are not going to, uh, allow this to destroy what 280 years it took to build or whatever it is, 250, uh, how long has the country been a country? 270, I don't know. But I think it sends a signal that we are not going to, um, allow this to ruin what so many people have died to create. And so I'm in, I'm, I'm in favor of fireworks also. But if we could somehow, because I also agree that we could do a better, amazing, something that's totally u- unique to Temecula and unique for this year, for 2020, being that it's literally a disaster year all the way around for everybody from cities to personal, uh, disaster. But to, to come out of this with some sort of a winter festival that would just be, um, something that we could claim as ours and, and, and do it dauntastically. Um, but I, 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 I'm with Mike. I, I think it sends the wrong message for us to kind of put our, uh, um, uh, candle under a, I can't even think of the words. But I don't want to hide our light. We are still the United States of America and I think we should prove it and show it. So, um, so I, is there a way we can somehow hybrid this? To where we are allow, uh, we could use fireworks at the Fourth of July and then bring them back for us. You know, maybe a scaled down version of both. So we're not spending any more money per se. But, but just so we have that opportunity to still celebrate the United States of America.
I think Councilmember Nigar has a question.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe I can try to craft something here, um, with a comment. Um, you know, I, I don't want to minimize what Dr. Ron said. It should not be minimized. Um, we're going to have fiscal challenges. Every city is going to have fiscal challenges. Um, I do look at the amount of money that we're going to spend on fireworks. Um, and when you compare it to if the challenges come, um, in the tsunami for everybody that we hope doesn't happen, but does, um, the, the amount of money we spent on fireworks will be insignificant. Um, and the cost of hope cannot be counted. The cost of, of, of just encouraging people, which is what people need right now, can't be counted. I, I'm, I know that there may not be support for this, but I'm going to float a motion for discussion. I'd like to go with, um, option B, um, but with option B also, uh, taken to consideration that, um, the restrictions on all of this may be lifted by then. If not, we fire off the fireworks. Everybody can come out of their house. It'll be simulcast with the radio. They can be in front of their front lawns from almost anywhere in the city. You'll be able to see it and hear it. Um, and, and I think that's, that's real important. Um, I'm also going to add, um, along the lines of what I mentioned with Mayor Stewart, that we consider something, um, unique to Temecula later on in the year, whether that's between Thanksgiving and Christmas or Christmas alone or something of that nature, or to at least revisit that. Um, and that would be my motion.
So I'll second for, for purpose of discussion.
All right. Discussion. Matt, what do you think?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm conflicted on this. You know, I mean, we have, uh, we have a very different situation than we had when, you know, the, uh, uh, words were written for the National Anthem. Um, and, uh, uh, you know, we have, we have people who are, are in, in desperate need right now. And we have folks who are sick and dying. Um, and I think we need to be mindful and respectful of that. Um, I, I, I recognize how important it is to be able to remind everybody, uh, the kind of country we are. Um, and I think there's, there's probably a hybrid here that, uh, that might be, um, might be appropriate here, but, you know, I'd, I'd still like, you know, based on the discussion we're having, I'd still like to see, you know, our folks with fire and, uh, and, uh, Kevin's team sort of weigh in on, on what we're talking about doing here. So we get a little bit more perspective.
Yeah, I, I would actually like to hear from Kevin also. Kevin or Don.
And hopefully fire as well, just to help us understand what's, uh, what their perspective is.
So go ahead and drop the, uh, there we go.
I, 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 excuse me, I know Don has a couple of things, but, um, you know, uh, this has been a tough one for us to, and you hear it in our voices and, and in the time that we spent on this too. Cause I like fireworks too. But also, um, I think we're all patriots here too. And so kind of the, the, the process we went through was, um, what celebrates our, our nation's birthday and, and our commitment to freedom? Is it fireworks or that commitment to freedom? And so then we said, well, is it the fireworks or is it the parade? Um, or is it both? Because when we talk about a Fourth of July event, it's, for me, it's the parade and the flags and gathering. Um, Mary Ann, you stop and then we, you know, we're, we're saying, okay, here it comes, you know? And that's it. And, and that's, that was my welcome to Temecula moment too. And so, um, so we're not even discussing the parade. And now we're equating, um, our patriotism to fireworks. And so that's been a tough one. Um, and so we want to have, um, the event. And I, and I get that too. And I thought what we were trying to do was provide a balance where, um, there was a comment about safety and we can safely do it. And, and that's still up to discussion. Um, I mean, so, uh, I've heard from my team, I haven't heard from the fireworks team, nor have I heard from public safety, from police and fire, and they may have a different discussion on it. And you're, Mary Ann, you're right. You know, if we were having this conversation maybe two months from now or a month and a half, it's, maybe it's going to be different.
Yeah.
But if you're asking us for something now and what we know now and the environment that we're in right now, we have to provide that balance and we're still trying, we're not saying we're foreclosing on the fireworks and our commitment um, in recognizing, you know, all of the liberties that we enjoy and all the sacrifices. Assuming, you know, in Roda, and that was last weekend, we didn't want to cancel that, but we postponed it. And so we're saying what we know now, and, and Erin's being kind, the vendor, we should have made a decision three weeks ago. Um, and we've kind of been carrying this and floating this and, and so that's why we brought it, um, as an urgent matter today. My final thing too is that I'm conflicted and I get that too. And here's where, when I'm, when I'm kind of, uh, conflicted, I got a recommendation from, um, Don and my team. And I trust Don. And that's all I need to say. And if her recommendation is to go with option A, then that's all I need to hear.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My May, um, um, we do have Chief Weiser and Chief Hall on the line. And if they want to provide commentary, um, this might be an appropriate time as well from an operations standpoint too. Let me start with Chief Weiser.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? My video does not work.
Yes.
Okay. Really don't have any comment one way or the other, uh, on this, um, whether or not we have the fireworks show, we, we will be available on the fire, uh, fire marshal's side to do our required inspections, no matter how this goes. As well as we will have the appropriate staff, uh, to be able to do our safety portion of ensuring that the city of Temecula is as safe as it can be, uh, if there are any unwanted fires that start from it. We have our staffing, we're fully up. I don't really have anything else to add.
All right. Thank you. And who's next?
Captain Hall.
Captain Hall.
Good sir, I'm here. Uh, having a little trouble hearing.
All right. Yeah. Speak loud.
I'm ready.
All right. Go for it.
Can you repeat the question or what the information is you need to know?
Go for it, Erin.
Captain Hall, uh, this is Erin. Um, just, just, um, I think for the city council's benefit, um, if we go forward with a fireworks show on July 4th, um, with a restricted access at the sports park, uh, to the best of our abilities, uh, with staff and security, um, what are your, uh, what's your perspective on that event from a law enforcement standpoint?
Well, I think it's hard to answer that right now because we don't know what is going to be, what requirements are going to be in play at the time.
Good answer.
And that's, that's exactly why we're.
There's no, I mean, there's just really no way to know because I have no idea what the future holds for public gatherings, uh, enforcements, possibly any second waves. Uh, I, I mean, we're, we're committed to being engaged as we always have. I just, I literally have no idea and it would be a guess.
All right. Well, thank you, Zach. Go ahead, Matt.
So, uh, on the, on the contract issue, you know, I, I, uh, Captain Hall, I, I think both you and Bill said it best. I mean, you're there to do what you need to do, but you know, there's, there's 100% uncertainty between now and July 4. Um, I mean, we couldn't even get the county, you know, to, to make any decisions because they realized they still need the state to weigh in. And I think we're a long way off from really knowing what the solutions, uh, will be, uh, you know, in, in a couple of months. Um, so, so I appreciate that perspective. Now, from a contracts perspective, Erin, um, or, or Kevin, if you could weigh in, uh, you know, if we're spending, you know, that kind of nickel on, you know, fireworks at this point, um, you know, and let's say state orders or, or county orders or something comes into play that restricts our ability to do any of this, um, where does that leave us? Do we own, you know, $50,000 worth of fireworks or have we missed the opportunity and we've, you know, just sort of, I mean, can we hit the pause button on it is what I'm saying? And would we be able to push it off till later or, you know, what? Uh, because, you know, we're, anyway, you get what I'm saying. What, 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 what does the contract say we'd be obligated for?
Like Erin, if you don't mind, I, I actually want Don to weigh in on, on this too. But in Don, in the response, I mean, we have the fireworks cost, but if we proceed with certain events, there's also kind of the staffing and the logistical support behind that too, which we shouldn't kind of separate out too. So there, you know, we may be talking about, you know, 40 grand or, you know, for just fireworks for one show. It could be more within their associated costs in order to put it on. So Don, can you maybe respond to that?
Absolutely. So in regards to the fireworks, the fireworks cost alone is just about $40,000. We do have an excellent relationship with Garden State Fireworks. If we were to say today, yes, we want to do fireworks and in a month we have to push back, I'm certain we could work something out. So we could say, we would like that same fireworks show in December, let's say. But that's just one cost to doing fireworks alone. I estimate the cost of the fireworks event is going to be very close to $90,000. I'm guessing around 86. Our normal Fourth of July event typically runs about 130,000. And just fireworks alone will be about 86, just with the safety precautions that we need to take.
I'm sorry. If, if you could just respond with option A, what, what, you know, sort of as a perspective, what does option A cost?
Option A, so luckily the virtual side of Fourth of July has very minimal cost. The only thing that will have, um, a financial side to it will be the band. And that will run about $3,000, which is very normal for the band that we get. Postponing the event, we will basically take our Fourth of July budget minus the parade cost. I'm thinking that will run because we don't need the fence or anything, probably close to 80,000 for postponing that event and doing a very, very similar type event in, let's say, December, New Year's Eve timeframe.
Okay. And then one last question. Let's say between now and June 15th, we elect to move forward with a Fourth of July, you know, fireworks display. Um, and on June 16th, we get the order from the county or the state that says, you know, absolutely not, no public gatherings, no, you know, whatever. What, outside of the cost of the fireworks, which you're saying, Mike, you know, we could sort of push off into another, you know, uh, uh, event, uh, what, what sort of abandoned costs, if you will, would we incur at that point? Cause we haven't, you know, we haven't done the public safety, you know, uh, outlay on that day. But, you know, any planning costs or anything else that we'd have to be worried about?
Well, at this point, if we're just talking about fireworks alone, there will be a cost. Um, we'd have to go into agreement with, um, the company that does the temporary irrigation. And that is a pretty strict contract with them. So that's a cost of almost $8,000. Um, we would have an agreement with the radio stations. We can cut this year specifically to simulcast, which last year we did not do on the radio. But just with fireworks alone, it would be important to bring that aspect back. Um, and then we have the security company, which comes at a large price tag. Um, and that would be another contract that we'd be in obligation with, which is going to run probably about $6,000. So we'd be on the hook for a good amount of money still. Um, and if I can just add one more comment at this time, managing the sports park on a normal year with a full staff team is difficult. I can't imagine, um, the difficulty we would have this year with the restrictions we are under. I think, um, for staff and our hired security, it would be very, very difficult to be able to manage a crowd, even if they're not inside the park, they're going to be outside the park.
Fair enough. Um, and then one more contract question that I'll be done here is, is between Don and Kev, Aaron, maybe Peter weighing in. Would we be able to have some sort of clauses? Or would these companies be amenable to some sort of clause, knowing the amount of uncertainty that we are? If we were to sign an agreement today saying, you know, with the security company, the radio station, irrigation and so forth. Um, and if we find out that, you know, several weeks from now, there's no chance of, of something like this happening under state order, um, you know, we don't want to have those, uh, you know, those funds at risk. Um, and is there a way to sort of contract around that, given these sort of unique times saying, you know, this is what we would like to, to, to have available, but if not, um, you know, unfortunately, we're going to have to resend the contract at no, no loss. Right? Um, I know we can always contract around these things, but you know, in your opinion, is. I know we can always contract around these things, but you know, in your opinion, is that a wise move? And would these contractors be amenable to something like that?
Dawn or Kevin? This is for you.
But for me, the answer is, I'm not sure. I actually don't know. I mean, that's asking a lot of a contractor and I know that they've extended, they've been very flexible to this point, too. So that would just require us to pose that to them directly and we, we're not ready to respond to that right now.
So, and I, I guess, Peter, if you want to chime in, I see her.
Yeah, I, I think Kevin's right. You can always contract around those issues, but the question is, how amenable will the vendor be to that? Because they have to set up their work. You know, they will, they, they, they may not be amenable to it because they would lose whatever funding they would have, they would lose opportunities with another client. So really the key is the vendors that staff is working with and whether they would be amenable to something like that.
Okay, and I, I apologize. Give me just one more moment, Stu, if you wouldn't mind. I apologize. But I'm trying to wrap my head around this is, you know, so of those vendors, how many do we have to, you know, you mentioned security, radio station irrigation as an example. How, how, how far out can we push those contracts?
Typically by now, everything will already have been in place and would have been in place for probably a few months. We're already really pushing, I mean, I've been in contact with all of these vendors numerous times saying, we're going to be making a decision, we're going to be making a decision, what, what are other cities doing? And they've been very gracious, but professionally speaking, we are past the point where I need to confirm with everybody. Either we're having an event or we're not having an event.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question too about this. Because, you know, obviously we're in very unusual times and a lot of businesses are having to make adjustments to their business models all the time, every day. And so I don't think it's, it's that, it's, it's asking too much of a vendor to make that request, like Matt was saying. Let, let's ask them, would they be willing to know that they have a deal here or a deal here? And depending on what the state does, and I'm, I'm sure every city or every organization that's using these companies are dealing with the same issues we are. So I can't imagine they haven't built that into their business model, thinking, okay, we're going to have to be flexible. I mean, these are very unusual times. And as a business, do we want to ruin a relationship with a, a city that we've done business with for years and always gotten paid? So this is our opportunity to say, hey, we're calling in our chips. We, we, we still may want to do a Fourth of July fireworks, but we're not 100% there. We're 60%. We're, we're seeing trends that is going to allow us to possibly get to a fireworks that we can control in a safe manner. But if the state or the county comes down on us and says, no, we won't be able to take that contract and push it out. So I, I don't think it's, it's that out of the realm of possibility for us to actually ask these vendors to say, look, you know, you know what you get when you get us. And, you know, we're going to pay you, you're not going to have any issues. Kevin, respond, please.
I know, I know, so actually trying to catch Aaron as well, too.
Yeah.
Now, we have a, we have a recommended course of action because it's not business as usual for us as a city. I mean, we had to, we've gone down the list of things that we've canceled and the adjustments. And so, so we're trying to maintain a sense of normalcy and hang on to certain things. And so I, I get that too. We have a recommendation that we're putting forward. We have concerns, but we are, we've also, we've been faced with challenges and will rise to any occasion. For us is not can we do it, is should we do it? And those are policy discussions. After we get to that point, whatever the decision that you make and Aaron provides direction to us, then we'll, we'll circle back and if we're able to accomplish it, we will. And if we can't, we'll report back as soon as possible. But right now, we're just putting forward our thoughts and we'll take it from there. I'm sorry, Aaron.
Yeah, let's hear from Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Kevin, I completely agree, whichever direction the city council directs, of course, we will make it happen as we always do. But with respect to contracts and contractual obligations, the, the firework vendor is, is the largest of the vendors that we're discussing. And if I recall correctly, it's a multi-year agreement. So it's a, it's a contract that we entered into some time ago. So it's not as if we're asking you to give direction and we can put in some force majeure clauses and other things to sort of wiggle out of it. We, we're in a contract for this firework vendor procurement. Correct, Dawn? Nod your head, okay. And then, but these other vendors, there, there may be, we may not be under contract. I'm going to assume we're not under contract with some of these auxiliary support operations, which would need to happen yesterday. And if we're asked to put on this event, we'll hustle and we'll, we'll move through it. And if we can negotiate sort of outlets in those contracts that have yet to be excluded, I presume we could attempt to do that. Dawn?
That seems reasonable. Currently, we're in a five-year agreement with Garden State Fireworks. We had just gone out to RFP, so this will be our first year in the new contract with them as we had just finished up a five-year agreement with them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's hear from Mary Ann.
So I, just, just to confirm, so recommendation is for A, correct? The virtual, the virtual Fourth of July, that's, that's staff recommendation, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so what I think, why, what Mike and I were talking about and I, and maybe Stu, I don't, I didn't do a head count, but when we say fireworks only, clearly that's going to be a hybrid. It's not going to be A, it's going to be no parade and instead, you know, have fireworks that night. But when Dawn, you talk about the sports park being unmanageable under these conditions, you mean if we opened it up for the full Fourth of July to try to maintain social distancing at the sports park, right? That is, that, that's what you were talking about? If we were going to open the park and, and, and I don't even know how you could do the parade and have social distancing. But when you talked about being untenable at the park and so difficult to manage, that is assuming we're under social distancing, right?
Um, actually, I was referring to this year, if we're doing just fireworks and we fence off the entire park.
That's what I wanted to know.
The public standing outside the fence is going to be difficult for us to manage as staff and our hired security, even with PD's assistance.
It would be, you know, and you hate to close off those streets because people would still walk. They would still walk down there. But yeah, I see your point. Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad I asked because I thought you were talking about if we went ahead and opened the park for the regular day-long celebration and then tried to keep people six feet apart. We've seen how the beaches are working and it's not all that great. So, okay, so I'm clear now. So you're going with the virtual, got it. Thank you.
All right, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Okay, so a couple of things and I'll try to make this as quickly as I can. I don't want this conversation to somehow minimize anyone's patriotism. The fact that maybe someone doesn't want something, it, this shouldn't even be part of the conversation. We are all Americans. We are all extremely patriotic in our own way. And we can all get behind the symbolism and what the Fourth of July means to individual people and we can all support that. So I just want to lay, lay that out there in some way, depending on how this plays out. I don't want anyone's patriotism minimized in any way or taken away from them. So I want to get that out there. The fact that we have very few surrounding cities, even, even on the books of saying we're doing this is, is, is sort of something we need to look at. The idea that if we go forward with this, there, there will be a descend, if people will descend on Temecula, right? Like, I mean, we're the only ones doing it, people will, will flock here. That happens anyways. I mean, we, we get, and, and because of the way we do things, right? The, the reason people come here is because of the way we do things. So you'll see that. You know, it's, it's enforcement to me, and we were just talking about, well, let's let everyone just, let's, let's just educate and let everyone make their own choices of whether or not they want to walk around a park or not. We're talking about now doing a Fourth of July fireworks where we're going to fence off a park and, but you can't watch from the sidewalks or the streets. You're only able to watch from your car, but that's not going to be realistic. So in some respects, I, I think we're just creating some significant issues with, with people getting out of their house. We're not even sure anything's going to happen anyway, so we're kind of trying to guess what's going to happen. With respect to the idea that everyone can walk onto their lawns and see the, the Fourth of July parade is optimistic at best. I mean, there's so many places in the city where you cannot see a fireworks show. You maybe can hear it. So you think people are going to, they're going to find high ground all over the city trying to see this. So I, so I think there's issues with that. You can throw in equity. Is it equitable for all of our residents if we do this is? People, we're assuming that everyone wants to go back to, to go out and the reality is, is people are afraid. People are still scared. People are still worried that they'll get sick. People are still concerned for their health. So, you know, is it something that, is it irresponsible of us to do, to move forward with this? I mean, given what's happening right now? I mean, people are, people are still dying, people are still getting sick and, and I don't want to minimize that in any way. I, I think that's important to have that perspective. For me, moving forward, option A is the option. I think having something in the winter with the spirit of what we are and who we are, I think is, is the right choice. It's the, it's the smart choice. And in the end, you know, the spirit of the Fourth of July and the spirit of patriotism, it's truly in our heart, right? It's, it's in our hearts. It's not in, it's, it's manifested in this fireworks show, but it's truly about gathering with your neighbors. I mean, that is why our family loves the Fourth of July. It's the barbecues with neighbors, it's hanging out, it's, it's enjoying what we love most about our neighbors is that they're our neighbors and we love being with them and we want to spend time with them. So while I can see some of the, the ideas behind wanting to do this from a symbolic standpoint where we need to do this for the constitution or we need to do this to provide hope, we can still provide those things virtually without the risk to staff, the risk to the public and, and just the, the unknown. So for me, I'm in the solid option A virtual with a, a very wonderful event in the wintertime.
I did have a, you brought up a, a very interesting point and I actually wrote it down before you even said it. That I think we're, we're going to witness a lot of people having a lot of Fourth of July celebrations all over the city. And so we're going to have mass gatherings at people's houses, you know, it may be 10, it may be 40, who knows? But part of me is now thinking, are we going to be promoting? Or by lack of having fireworks, are we going to be promoting illegal fireworks? It already happens when we have our normal Fourth of July celebration. I, I sit and watch them go off around my house, too. But as soon as we make the announcement that we're not going to do it, is that going to be a major issue for us? And I, I kind of think it might be. I think it's something that fire may have even a harder time protecting us against is the, the most likely event that we're going to have a lot of Fourth of July parties and get togethers that are going to end up in their own private fireworks displays because they know for sure we're not going to do it. And, you know, and, and like you said, Zach, I mean, people who are afraid and feel like they're going to get sick from this virus, by all means, stay home, do, you know, do what you got to do to protect yourself. But at the same token, I, I don't think you're going to see a whole lot of people doing that on the Fourth of July. So I, I don't know, I'm, I'm still kind of waffling on this issue because I really I just see it as something that is ingrained in us that the Fourth of July has such strong meaning to us that for a city to, to still be a shelter in place city at that moment, it just doesn't feel right. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at with it. Mike, go ahead and give me your two cents.
Well, I, I, I cannot imagine a virtual Fourth of July. Hey, John and Mary, turn on the TV. There's going to be a video of fireworks. Oh, better yet, why don't you get out your cell phone? You can watch it there. And, and everybody getting excited about that. If, if that's the road we're going to go down, just eliminate option A. To me, to me alone, is thoroughly ridiculous of a virtual Fourth of July. It destroys the whole meaning. As it relates to safety, listen, people are going to gather, they're going to turn on their radio. They're going to gather in their yards or front lawns on their streets. They may gather around the sports park and all the, you know, Starlight Ridge and Palomadel Soul and all of those areas. And I am thoroughly okay with that. And the reason I'm okay with that is I do not want to control anybody. I have full faith that people can control themselves and that government has no place to say you can go here or you can go there. As now there's orders in place, I know that's going to, to be the refrain. Let people govern themselves under those orders. That I could support. As it relates to equity, you know, yeah, some people, you know, don't feel safe, Zach. I don't know what to tell you. I don't know that we cancel the program for that. I just don't, you know, the equity also plays on the other side. So let's cancel it and those who, you know, who would have liked to have it, don't get to enjoy it either. There is, and, and, and you're right, Zach. And for everybody, none of this should question anybody's patriotism. We all have a point of view. That's an area that here in a public meeting, we don't need to go, not, not now, not at this time. So having said that, I, I, I just, there's something about in the heart of liberty and what we were founded on that makes us want to push through, makes us not want to give up, makes us want to be victorious. And that is what I meant by when the bombs, by the National Anthem. It wasn't meant to portray anybody as unpatriotic, if anybody took it that way. While the bombs were bursting, people were dying, but the flag was still there. So while there's a coronavirus that is threatening or supposedly threatening our nation, our country, our world, we will still push through because our liberty is more important than that. That's important. That's the spirit that we're, I'm coming from. So you know, I don't want to push anybody through. I do think there is a logistic problem of closing off Ronald Reagan, but I also think we can, we can try that. You put up some, you might have to close off Rancho Vista Road. That's easily enough done. There's other outlets in the Starlight Ridge and Lake Villages there. Both of those happen to lie in my district. And then the only other area you have to worry about, I guess, is off of Margarita. Okay? Other than that, you don't really have a closing off the sports park problem. So I, I like the motion that I made. I'm, I'm not going to call for the question because I'm, again, I don't want to step on anybody. This is delicate for everybody, but I think this is thoroughly doable. And I'll leave it with this and I'll even amend my motion. If in a month and a half of Dawn and Kevin trying, we can bring this back and, and listen to any constraints that they come up with that are not working. But I have full faith in Captain Hall to pull it off. And again, on the cost, I think what we get out of it makes the cost extremely negligible.
All right, Mary Ann, yes.
It's been so long. Did, did I second this motion? Okay, so I, I have a couple of things to say. And, and one is, you know, it's tradition. I mean, this is a really strong tradition that's very meaningful for Temecula residents and families. And it's even meaningful for non-residents who jump in their car and come down here every year after they've spent their, you know, their, their day with their family around their. with their family around their pool in Wildamar or wherever they are. So, um, I think it's just really, it's a strong tradition. And I, I know that Mike doesn't equate patriotism with, uh, you know, having the fireworks display, but it certainly is a way for us to express our patriotism and for others to enjoy that and also, um, you know, express their patriotism. So, and, and also I'm going to say in defense of, of staff, virtual fireworks for me is kind of like watching bowling on TV. Now, I know I've just defended all the bowlers, but you know, if that's not your thing, then you know, go watch bowling or golf. And I'm also a golfer, so, um, but I think in staff's defense, I think they were trying to find the safest, most manageable economical way to bring a safe Fourth of July celebration. And, uh, so I, I appreciate that. So thank you for all your work and I know that if we went with option A, it would be dauntastic, just like, um, all of our celebrations would. I'd still kind of like to see that hybrid where we opt not to do the parade and try and, try and figure out a way to do fireworks and stop the mad, you know, it's always a madhouse around the sports park anyway. And our police force is out in, I mean, in force on that day. They are there, the command center is there, so maybe we would have to utilize the same level of policing for, um, you know, we don't want people pushing up against the fence. But by the same token, the car, the parking and the exiting the sports park afterwards, it's not, it's going to be the same. I mean, it's just completely packed, it's at capacity when people are trying to leave and the way that parking is. So I think that's not going to change around the sports park. I think it's going to expand, maybe a little bit more than it does. But, um, on the other hand, I think people who don't have to go and can still find a way to view the fireworks closer to their home, um, I think that they will do that and everybody tunes into the radio broadcast anyway. So, um, I don't know, I appreciate what you guys have done to try and bring us a Fourth of July celebration with, uh, you know, in virtual format. I'd still like to really see those fireworks live and see if we can find a way to manage, uh, the crowd control of people around the sports park, which is usually maxed out anyway, so that's just my two cents.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Just, just a couple of thoughts and, and I appreciate keeping the, uh, conversation going. Although I'm not sure we're going to land in the place that everybody's satisfied with. But, uh, you know, a couple of thoughts. One is, you know, and I've said this at meetings before and I know I've said this to our, um, city manager and, uh, to his staff. We expect the best and we get the best from those folks who work at the city of Temecula. They have taken into consideration a very challenging question for us. And they've landed in a place based on their expertise that suggests, you know, option A. And I have said this in, in several occasions and I think it's as meaningful as it's ever been here today to say that if we substitute our opinion for staff's recommendation, we better have a damn good reason why. And outside of this overt display of patriotism, which I recognize is important, I'm not hearing that reason. Right? I think there's all sorts of ways we can show our patriotism and love this country while respecting the hard work that the staff has done. And so I'm just not comfortable doing that. Furthermore, none of us here are, 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 you know, medical experts. And so we're making a decision saying, hey, let's go ahead and do this. But if you go back to the Liberty Parade, nineteen eighteen, Philadelphia during their Spanish flu, you know, they resulted in thousands of people becoming infected because they made a decision. They didn't understand what they're doing and frankly, they didn't have the kinds of, you know, infrastructure we have today with regard to our public health system. Uh, now, I'm not saying that that's going to happen in this case, but I'm saying I think we're just way too premature in this conversation to be making any solid decision or recommendation here. We, you know, we just saw the county spend, you know, a marathon meeting that reminded me of the Liberty Quarry days, talking about, you know, this issue and landing on the fact that they don't have enough information, they have too much uncertainty. And so they're going to push it off till Friday and maybe even later than that. And so here we are making decisions and we're giving staff direction that I think is unqualified. And, and we're saying, we're going to do all this stuff, but we don't know what's going to happen either. I think the only decision that we have in front of us right now is, is a fairly simple one. Do we, you know, continue to, you know, uphold the, the contract with the fireworks company? And my understanding and Aaron, Dawn or, or Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong here. But if we, you know, we're under obligation, you know, in this contract right now, we spend forty thousand dollars on fireworks and we can blow those things up, you know, on the Fourth of July if we're allowed to or we can do it at a later date and have a celebration for some other means. But it sounds like we're going to have a stock of fireworks that, you know, we, we may or may not be able to light up. And so as far as I'm concerned, the only thing that's in front of us right now, until we have additional certainty from the state and the county of what is going to happen is what do we do with that contract? Because, you know, at this point, if we start telling staff, go off in all these directions, make these financial obligations, do all of these things, I'm not comfortable with that because we have no idea what this city, country or state is going to look like on July fourth. That said, I'd also like some certainty from those vendors. I'd like to see this, you know, item brought back for discussion because if we're talking about irrigation, radio station, security, you know, you mentioned several key, you know, high, uh, ticket items. Let's get some certainty from them, let's ask them, hey, can we put a COVID clause, you know, into our agreements with you this year? It's happening all over the place right now. Um, and Peter, I'm sure you're probably well aware of all of that and probably can draft something up that's amenable to our contractors. Let's, let's reach out to him, them and ask, you know, can we, can we put a COVID clause in here and come back to this? Because I, I frankly, I just, I understand everybody's viewpoint here, but we just don't have enough information to give staff direction at this point. Aside from, and they're, they're trying to give us their feedback based on the circumstances they have in front of them. And to dismiss that at this point, I think is, you know, is wrong of us. So, you know, so I would, I would, I'd, I'd, you know, uh, offer, you know, an amendment to the motion saying, yeah, let's go ahead and do the fireworks. Because, you know, I will be the first person to be at our fireworks, you know, uh, event at, at the, at the park, standing next to all of you and our friends and family, if that is something that we are able to do. And I can't think of any better way to spend that day than to be there with all of our colleagues and our staff and everyone else in this city, celebrating that day and hopefully celebrating a reemergence of our community at that point. But, you know, at this point, I just, I a hundred percent do not have the confidence of what is going to happen. And so I'm willing to move forward, at least giving some direction on the contract with the fireworks. And, and we absolutely need to have more certainty of what's, what's going to happen at this point because I just don't think we have it. And if we start making obligations and decisions right now, recognizing that neither the county nor the state, you know, is going to allow these activities, I think we've wasted a lot of resources and time. And quite frankly, I'd like us and I look forward to next week's discussion where we talk about, you know, the economic engine of, of Temecula and what we're going to do to restart our economy and, and ensure our community's safety.
Can I make just one suggestion? I, I like what you're saying, Matt, and, and I would love to, because we are going to meet again in six days. So is there an opportunity for staff to reach out to these vendors and see if we could put a COVID clause that, because I, I, I a hundred percent want to go forward with fireworks. I'm telling you right now, I'm totally wanting to do that. And if it was a vote right now, no matter what, I'd vote for it. But at the same token, I want to put in some flexibility into our options. And if, if Kevin and Dawn can reach out to these vendors and, and express the angst that we're trying to do. We really do want to put this thing on, um, but we want to have some safeguards built into our options also.
Mr. Mayor, we need a second for that motion and I would do that as long as, can we clarify what the motion was exactly, Matt?
Well, hold on, there's a, is, before you go on, is, there's a motion on the table unless there's an alternate motion being made.
Right.
But, but I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. But I have a question because I can amend my motion to accommodate Matt, but I, I wanted to get some clarity. When you talk about audits, y- y- what would be the, the precedent that would exercise the option? Something where they, where some rule came down from California and said, you can't light these off.
Yes.
Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, I would be happy to amend my motion to, to include something like that. I think that's appropriate. If, if there is a ruling that comes down from the county or the governor that says you can't light off these fireworks, we'll have to abide by it, I want our vendors to abide by it as well. And I think that's reasonable. Matt, does that get you where you want to go?
Not really, because that, they've already said that, right? I mean, today as it stands, this is an unallowable activity. So for us to say we're going to go ahead and do it, you know.
I'd differ with you, um, setting off fireworks is not allowed. I think it's the, it's the large public gatherings, which, which we're not, we're not fostering.
We're encouraging. So, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, if, until we have some idea of where the state, we don't know what the state is going to come out with tomorrow. You know, I think, I think this is a very simple, you know, issue right now. Deal with the fireworks contract right now, let's talk about that, get that thing put in its place. I think we all want to see the acquisition, you know, and, and uphold the, the contract, you know, obligation we have, uh, hitting the pause button on when exactly, you know, we'll be using that, that arsenal. Until then, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to see, you know, some, some confirmation back from Peter and, and Kevin and others on, on what our options are for contracting with these other folks. And I'm asking for six days for us to be able to get some additional clarity. We'll understand what the county is doing, we'll understand what the state's doing. Because right now, if we're the city that comes forward and the, the only one in the region that potentially comes forward and say, hey, we're going to do a Fourth of July fireworks, you know, thing, um, you know, we, we don't want to be Huntington Beach. We don't want to be these other communities where we're, you know. Well, you know, look, I'm not going to debate that.
That's a broad statement, but, uh, but, um, a lot of.
Can we get, can we let Aaron, uh, chime in here?
I would just like to see us figure out a solution, you know, to move past the issue that Aaron has here today, but identifies, you know, a little bit more clarity so we're not just shooting from the hip right now.
Let Aaron speak on this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just two things. I think the decision we'd, we'd like to get out of today is a go, no-go on the fireworks. If we can answer that question, that would, that would be fantastic. The second thing to Councilman Ron's question, staff is willing and able to, um, contact those auxiliary vendors and, and begin sort of conversations about, um, what type of, um, securities, COVID nineteen clauses we could, we could put in those. We're, we're more than willing to, to go down that path and, uh, explore those with, again, the auxiliary vendors, not the firework vendor.
So if that's, then I can sec, I can second the amended motion if that's what the amended motion did.
By, I, um, um, I, I think we're, we're, I was clear with the first part. The amendment is go to our fireworks vendor and, uh, and the other vendors, among, we just include them all. And short of a, um, uh, short, a- 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 and if an order comes down that you cannot do these fireworks, then, then we want out of the contract at this moment, whatever that means, okay? And I feel comfortable with that. Also, Matt, you know what we can do and I think the mayor would be amiable. This thing, we need to make decisions, as Aaron just said. This thing is so fluid, Mr. Mayor, if something changes in the next day, call a special meeting, okay? I will meet, as I know every one of my colleagues will, daily if that's what we have to do. And so nothing stops us from doing that. And, uh, but we, but we need to give staff direction and then see what happens from there. But we need to decide, not postpone.
So we have a motion on the floor. Basically to. So we have a motion on the floor to actually proceed with fireworks on the fourth, but also asking our vendors from all the ones that are on that list to see if we can get some sort of a, a COVID that if the state or the county comes down to where we can't do it, we can push this off to another time. Is that correct?
That would be correct. And, uh, also just for clarity, the parade's not on the table. I don't see any way we pull off.
Correct, the, the parade was never, I mean, it's, we're, we're recommending canceling that, so it's not really up for.
You got it. Good, um, I may want to add one little thing and it's for my colleague, Matt Ron. I don't know that we need a motion, but you're the one who calls special meetings, um, that's the mayor's privilege. It just, let's, you're willing to meet as often as, as necessary, is that, is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
So if we need to meet tomorrow, the next day, whatever, and, um, I think we're all committed to that.
Yes.
So, uh, do I need to insert that in the motion, uh, Mr. City Attorney or?
No, the mayor can call a special meeting at any time, that's more of a understanding and consensus. I do want to raise one issue. And that is the original motion that, uh, Councilmember Nigar made, that, uh, Councilmember Edwards seconded for discussion, did talk about having the park to remain open if the restrictions are lifted. So, uh, do you want, what, what is, what is your desire with respect to the, uh, Ronald Reagan Sports Park being open for the fireworks show?
If there's no restrictions on those gatherings, that would be part of my motion.
And to clarify, it's restrictions imposed by the county or the state, correct?
Right.
Right.
And, um, you know, uh, Matt, again, what you're saying is not lost on me. I would go as far if the council is, is willing, is to notify them that we're going to do this, that the county and the state that we're, we plan on doing this, I have no problem doing that.
Couch it in the opposite direction, which is, you know, and, and rely on the county and the state, you know, in their guidance and in their decision-making. And, and look, we could talk about whether or not we, we agree, you know, or not, uh, with what's happening. But, um, we, we don't simply have a choice. So, you know, I, I, I want, I want to be clear that what we're saying is we're giving direction to, to staff to say, go ahead and do this, but again, we have no certainty that we're going to be able to do anything. And so, you know, so that's why I want clarification on, on the, uh, the contracts. So we're not, you know, at risk for, for any financial liabilities. And at the end of the day, I, you know, I want to be one hundred percent clear that we're not saying, you know, go ahead and do a fireworks show. We're saying in essence, do the fireworks show, you know, under these restrictions and things and social distancing and, and, you know, you know, all of that, as those orders are in place. And ultimately, we're going to need, you know, I think, Peter, uh, you know, some, some sort of, uh, decision at some point that if we don't see the lifting, you know, that we have, uh, you know, that we're hoping for, we need to understand whether or not what we're proposing is even allowable under state or county guidelines because that's the ultimate, you know, dictator of what the city would be allowed to do. And whether, you know, whether we reach out to the county or the state, you know, at some point and say, hey, this is what we're trying to do. Here's the restrictions and, and things that we're going to try and put in place under what we understand is your guidance. Does this meet the sniff test? Because what I certainly don't want is to be made, you know, an example out of, of how, you know, government is, is circumventing state or county ordinances or rules, right? I want us to be in compliance with this and I want to make sure that we do things the right way. And, and I don't want to have, you know, our staff or anybody else, you know, second guessing themselves in the, in the decisions, you know, that they're making moving forward to provide this kind of event.
Dr. Ron, I, I don't disagree with you and, um, uh, I'm going to call for the question here in a second. Let's just handle it one day at a time as needed, okay? Um, and, and we'll see where it goes. I don't want to belabor the discussion too much, but there's a lot of pent up anger out there uh, about people's constitutional rights and things of that nature that I don't want to trigger, nor do I want to suppress. So let's just handle it one day at a time, one day at a time.
Point of order, can we restate the motion please, just so that we're clear, the viewers are clear and everybody's clear.
Peter, can you read it or do you want me to do it?
Uh, I'll be happy to do it. Uh, was a motion, uh, made by, uh, Councilmember Nigar and seconded. Uh, was a motion uh made by uh Councilmember Nigar and seconded by Mayor Protem Edwards um, with agreement as to the terms, and that is to proceed with option B to allow the fireworks show, uh, allow the Ronald Reagan Sports Park to open if there are no state or county restrictions on an opening for the fireworks show. And uh, the third part is to uh direct staff to work with vendors to allow for cancellation of the uh vendor contracts if there is an order from the state or county that says you cannot have a fireworks show.
That's the motion.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
I'm gonna couch this with a brief explanation. Say, uh, I'm I'm gonna vote no, out of respect for the staff and the work that they've done on this. Um, and in an abundance of caution, however, Mike, uh, I deeply appreciate the conversation. I support it in spirit, but just out of respect for the work they've done, I'm voting no.
I know, I know, Matt.
Councilmember Schwank?
Uh, I'm a no.
Mayor Stewart?
And I wanna, before I say, I wanna thank you two for sticking to your guns, Matt and Zach, but I'm gonna vote yay, so three, two. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is there anything pressing uh anymore on this agenda?
No, we're done, we're actually done. So I'm gonna adjourn this meeting until Tuesday, May twelfth.
Blessings.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone, really good.
Thank you.